At 6:30, we're going to open up our public meeting that was continued from previously for site plan approval for 449 Wachusett Street. We have someone here to present the plan.
Hello, again, my name is Drew Bardakis and with AMAC, I'm an engineer on the project. We're with Bill Daley from Sunken. I'm just looking to provide an update from the last time we were here. Essentially, we reviewed the project at the first meeting back in March, I believe. And since then, we've had a site walk with several board members. We revised the design a little bit to the array and also addressed some of the outstanding comments from the last meeting. And then also had some updated submittals for stamp drawings and stormwater reports and things of that nature. So, I'll just walk through the drawing set with what was submitted last week. So basically, the existing conditions plan, same the same, just outlines the property with the topo survey that AMAC completed and the wetlands that were flagged on the slate. We'll do it in here. On the site walk, we met out here at the site entrance and walked the existing access, I wouldn't exactly call it a roadway, but walking pathway, and observed all the wetland flagging that was done by our staff. And noted approximately where the watershed protection zones were that we were proposing the road to bend around. So we walked into the site, up to the golf course, which is this open area, and walked up through here, up into this flat area where the array starts, which I'll get to. But again, the reservoir off to the north, the 400-foot buffer zone, and then the conservation is then off to the east, represented by this dash line here.
I'm going to interrupt you for just one second and open up the 6:31 meeting, public hearing that has been continued for special permit approval for 449 Wachusett Street for the use and also continue the public hearing for special permit for 449 Wachusett Street for construction within the water supply protection district. We can continue.
Thanks. So this overall plan shows the proposed access roadway upgrades along that existing path that we walked and also the new roadway extension to get up to the array. So since the site walk, we've gone out and added additional wetland flagging down in this area. We plan submitting an NOI to the Conservation Commission shortly. We have to do a little more field work to obtain some wetland data points out here to confirm our roadway design and confirm the impacts to the wetland area. So we're finalizing that now, we'll be submitting to Conservation shortly for our NOI applications to cross this wetland. And also look at impacts to crossing the well and also creating wetlands remediation areas to offset that impact. So on the walk, we walked up through here and then got around in this area to the start of the array. The array design since last meeting essentially hasn't changed all that much. The very first submittal back in late January, early February, a lot of the array was closer to the reservoir on the seeper slopes. We pulled that back to utilize the flatter top portion of the array. The only thing that's changed since last time with regards to stormwater was we had a stormwater basin in the southeast corner here. The stormwater report that was previously done worked. The DPW engineer had some comments on our model that we incorporated into design. So even though the previous stormwater design worked through infiltration and through the gravel areas, sort of a bell and suspenders kind of design we had of the basin to just further address any potential stormwater runoff. So as part of that, any displaced panels in that area would just relocate them to the southern area. But the general shape of the array is same the same since our site walk and since the last submittal. That's the overall design plan. Some extra sheets were added. I believe there was a comment last time about zoomed-in plans so you can see the tiles here represent the additional sheets that were added for added detail on each section of the project. It was the road entrance and the road bend to stay out of the watershed protection area. The access road heading in by the golf course. And the northern section of the array. And the southern section with the roadway turnaround and the equipment on the western side. And essentially, the stormwater basin is just a burned-up area on the eastern side to collect any potential runoff with an outlet structure and berm on the eastern side. Same type of construction details on the last few sheets, the roadway, erosion sediment control, detailed in notes. And then we added an extra sheet, as I mentioned, for the additional stormwater design we did that was outlined in the report for that detention basin down in the southeast corner, just in general, outlet we are in berm and piping construction details for the added stormwater. So as I mentioned, we'll be filing our NOI shortly with Conservation for that wetland crossing. Elizabeth and I spoke today. There was miscommunication on our part, I apologize for that, for stamped plans, submittals, which we got in today, should have been in sooner, so I apologize for that. Also, the stormwater report, to update that in accordance with the latest designs. All of that should be up to date as of today. I understand that it hasn't been enough review time for everyone to take a look at all the materials, but going through the reports and the previous comments, I believe we're pretty much up to speed with everything. So we're just looking for more feedback from the board, see if there's any more questions or any other outstanding items. Again, we'll be filing with Conservation soon, going through the wetlands piece and more of that, that roadway piece. So basically, just looking for more comments, looking for steps forward, any outstanding items.
Do you want to have any questions or comments before I open it to the public? Yeah, Sam?
Yeah, I have some comments. Yeah, I did some homework on this one. You know, a pretty simple guy, and I do know the area well. And I wanted to compare it with what we put off of Pleasant Street. The one off of Pleasant Street, Elizabeth provided me with the numbers, is 6 acres. This is what, 24?
Four times.
Four times. So it's four times the size. Now, I don't know who's been up there looking, but I took a walk on the arrays of the Pleasant Street. And that's a big one. This is 24 acres. Not only that, this is, you know, you go from a wildlife habitat, and that was the intent. Once these go in, if this is approved, you won't have wildlife anymore.
It's private property.
Huh?
It's private property.
It is private property, but it's still a special permit. Okay? So I just want everybody to realize the size of this thing, because once it goes in, if it gets approved, there's no, it's never going to change. And, you know, I'm wondering if mass wildlife got in there and did a survey, if it's a deer yard in the winter. I, you know, took pictures of a lot of animal sign while I was out there. I just think it's going to alter the whole area. I think it's a resource to the city. I think the animals and the habitat is a resource to the watershed. So I've got some real problems with the size of this thing. I mean, this is enormous. So, you know, I know in a lot of the other projects you've done, they were a lot smaller scale than this. I don't know what the break-even point is, you know, on putting this thing in there, but I just think it's too much for that area. And I don't think it qualifies for all points on a special permit. So if you allow this, it's going to be like this the rest of the, you know, kids aren't going to see what we saw growing up. Yeah, it's private property, but he put it into one, I just think it's so chaotic that he puts it into a wildlife preserve, and now he's going to turn it into a solar farm and push all the wildlife out. You know, the deer, bobcats.
That's not part of the...
We're outside of the conservation.
They're outside of it, but all that area, you know? I mean, that was what the area was supposed to be about. So, I mean, I think the city should buy it itself and protect what's around it. Just some thoughts and opinions on it. I just think it's way overdone for the area. Too big, too much. Especially when I walked Pleasant Street, when I walked the one near home woods. So, this is a major, major solar. And they don't have any this big.
Completely hidden.
It is completely hidden, I give it. And the access road was fine, you know? I mean, we'd have to make some changes because it's a home that abuts, you know, the ins and outs, but...
There's nobody ever going to...
I just have problems with putting it there, because once we do, that's it. It's over. It'll never be different. So that's my two cents. I don't know if anybody else has an opinion, but that's my two cents. And I'm not against, you know, I'm not against alternative energy, believe me, you know? But I'm also a conservationist, and I also know that land. I just think it's what a waste of that land. That's my opinion.
I don't disagree with you considering the size. I was contemplating about with the board's opinion about having, and we'll open up to the audience, about having an independent engineer look at it.
Yep.
And someone has to review the...
Plans, anyway.
The stormwater report.
Right. And I'd like to see mass wildlife for a walk. I really would, to see what kind of resources we're upsetting up there. You know, they know the areas, they do their studies, and they know where, you know, you take out a deer yard in this area, you won't have deer up there. And you've got the state forest, which feeds this, you've got all the other side of Wachusett Street, all the way up to Sterling, you've got all the sportsman's club. So that's how I feel.
Anyone else in the board have any questions before I open up to the audience or comments? Open up to the audience, does anyone have any questions or comments? Yes, if you could identify yourself, sir.
Danny Mack, I live on 1294 Elm Street, and I agree with him because I hunt up there, I walk through the woods. 24 acres of trees, that's going to slow down, you know, rain coming down hard, or in the wintertime keeping the snow coming down. And then what's going to happen if you've got all the snow all of a sudden melted in wintertime? All that cold water runs into that ice reservoir, now you're changing the temperature, then in the wintertime, you're going to cool it off or warm it up. In the summertime, you've got an extra cold water running to the reservoir. Your college, that reservoir is going to change. And then once that changes, it's going to cost somebody a lot of money to fix it. Is it going to be a let's say a lemon store? Is it going to be mass, you know, water department? Once the water gets screwed up and the foil grows in, you're not going to fix it. And then what about the road on Wachusett Street and Elm Street, the wear and tear to the construction, who's going to pay for that one? And for the people that made a trip up there, the construction vehicle that are really going to be able to drive into that, you know, that area?
Well, they make the road.
Or even, you know, and the traffic there is already pretty bad now, we're speeding up and down the road. And the power line going to accommodate extra voltage? I've been told by the sportsman club, they tried to do solar farm up there before, it was turned down because the power line didn't support it.
There's no, there's no, it can't, it won't turn on.
Well, they approached solar farm companies.
Yeah.
Yep. And I know we talked about fire last time, and their solution was to get water, you know, fire department would get it from the reservoir. That's fine in the summertime, but on the winter, when it's frozen.
Actually, one of that's one of the concerns that I had originally.
Right, that's what I'm...
You know, that fear was a lane because they're going to run underground conduit.
Yep.
And the only transformer will be at the street.
Yep.
So I didn't really have an issue with that. I had an issue with how far the setbacks might be, you know, I mean, how far they're clear from the fence where the panels are. I think they should do a little extra clearing of this cauliflower, but that's if I was in favor. And I just think this is habitat loss that this city shouldn't need dealing with.
If mass wildlife would not do a point to be asked for it.
No, no, I don't know if anybody asked mass wildlife.
I already talked to somebody, a friend of mine works for mass wildlife.
And they haven't been even asked.
Yeah, they said, you know, they only do it if it's been asked officially.
Correct.
Yep.
Correct.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Your name and address, please.
Rex Baker, Lemusstah Road, Princeton, consulting forester for the Vashon family. I have been all over that entire property over the years. I know it quite well. I take issue with a deer yard. There is a small acre area of hemlock, which is considered a deer yard.
I say it was, I said, it's a possibility.
But it's so minor, there's no evidence, there's very little evidence of deer anyway. There are deer up there. There are porcupines.
Baccoons, bobcats, coyotes, I've got pictures of them.
I haven't seen any evidence of turkeys.
Bears, did you see any evidence of bears? Because there's a couple bears roaming there, too.
It could be bear, but I haven't seen no evidence myself. I'm, in the process, if this goes through, I'm working on the timber sale part of things. The solar area would have to be clear cut, and I have a logger temporarily lined up for all of this if this ever happens. So I think in the big scheme of things, as far as wildlife habitat is concerned, with all the area that the watershed comprises, this is a very small amount of territory, very small.
But you also have a vested interest.
I'm forester for the Lemusstah Sportsman's Club. We have done two 20-acre clear cuts on the Lemusstah property, on the Sportsman's Club property, and we haven't seen any real change in any wildlife differences, there are deer and there were some moose, but I don't know if there's any moose left around the area. Anyway, I think it will make very small impact on the wildlife situation. Now, I have a fellow forester that is involved with solar things, and he has been hired to prepare a plan for how to reforest the area in the future, as to what type of plants or trees would be put back. We all assume that at some point, it will not exist anymore. These, like everything else in life, it's a temporary thing. Whether it will go into 25 years or whether it'll go 50 years or even 100 years, nobody knows. But if it does disappear, it will have to be replicated, and there should be something in all the plans somewhere along the line for how that will be done. I'm not familiar with what other solar farms have transpired, so that's about all I can comment.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else have any comments or questions?
Yeah, again, my name's Lori Mack. This is my opening day. Just to reiterate, we did have problems with the fire department getting up there. It is 3.7 miles to the nearest fire hydrant. Because if something does happen up there, that's a long ways for a fire truck, an empty fire truck to go. Stump fires could be an issue because trees are very close together, coming right up to houses. And as far as wildlife, again, our land does abut this land. We do have a trail cam, or did have at one point in our yard. We have seen moose, we've seen deer, coyotes, turkeys, you name it, we got it. And it's right in our yard, including the bear. So like I said, our main concern is for our safety with the fires. And again, the solar panels, what comprises the matrix of a solar panel is extremely toxic. I would be very concerned as to making sure that there's enough checks on these solar panels, because if those solar panels break and land on the ground, whatever's in there decays into my water system. Everybody up there has their own water well. We can't afford to have toxic stuff seep into our well water. I have children here. Water is our life. So I'm just mainly concerned basically for the fire, the toxicity, because I'm told that the panels are going to be checked on like every six months or every quarter. Well, what happens if a big windstorm comes and, you know, something falls on one of those panels, smashes it, lands on the ground? You know, or a moose run and throw it? So, you know, if something happens the day after it's been checked on and nobody goes up there to check on it again for six more months, that's six months' worth of decay. Is that, is that stuff going to be getting into our water system? I see him shaking his head, and that's fine, but I need to know these answers, and these answers aren't being given to me as of this point. I don't know what to worry about. But I'm concerned mainly for our safety, our welfare up there.
Thank you. And again, the wildlife, too, is, we enjoy it. Yes?
Yeah, my name is Melissa Vashon from 449 Wachusett Street. I just want to say something in behalf of my husband, because he's not here. As far as the wildlife, sir, that's why my husband, he's a conservationist, we love wildlife, that's why he donated 140-plus acres. And we still pay, no tax break on that one, I just want everybody to know. We didn't get, like, everybody else, that we get a tax break, we did not get a tax break, because we do, we do love animals. So I just wanted to, I think, just on behalf of my husband. Because he does, we do, we love woods, as everybody knows. We love woods, we respect animals. That was, he did it without hesitation to donate the amount of land. And that's an enormous land that he donated. Okay? Thank you so much. I just want, like I said, I wanted to address to you about the wildlife, like, we don't, we see people there hunting, you know, it's against us, but we don't say anything. People walk, a long time ago, people did their trail. I think, what's the name of that trail, Rex? The city don't even know that it was in the Vashon land, but my husband did not say anything because people enjoy it. They enjoy wildlife, they enjoy walking on the woods. We didn't even know that when they made the trail, that it was...
The Sonic Trail?
Yeah. We didn't even say anything, but when they found out, the Conservation Commission found out that it was in our land, they moved it. My husband said, you don't need to, but they did move it when they found out that it was in our land. Because, like I said, we don't mind people enjoying wildlife, and we love wildlife also. But, you know, sometimes things, like I said, you know, it's not like we don't like wildlife, we do. That's all. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay, I'll give the applicant an opportunity to respond to any kind of...
Yeah, just a couple things on the roadway design. I know the fire department looked at that, and one of the stipulations was to have it provide access to a fire truck, so we designed that so a fire truck could access this and get up here and turn around. So I know the fire department has looked at this. In terms of fires, a lot of research has been done about fires, and essentially, these things don't spontaneously create fires, so they're not fight-feeding fires, but essentially, it's up to the local departments what's required, and this is what we've been directed to do, is have a roadway that can access a fire engine to the equipment. So that's what we've done. In terms of the stormwater, that's what we've addressed with the updated stormwater design to work with the city engineer and city public works. As I mentioned, this is also going through Conservation Commission and Mass CEP, so they'll also be looking at that to meet the state stormwater standards, so we meet all of the standards and the requirements in terms of runoff and infiltration and things of that nature. Toxic materials, you can get specifications, I believe, as part of the original application on the panels. Even in the transformer, there are toxic materials, and other biodegradable materials. So later, when these things go to construction, there's what's called a Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, it has a spill control section in it. That's required for EPA permit for the construction general permit, so there's a lot of detailed construction and erosion and sediment control issues in there, but also for spills and toxic materials, which we don't really have any here. So, I mean, we're concerned about groundwater, too. We don't want contamination either. We're also concerned about the quality and the quantity of runoff, and that's what's all addressed in the permit applications. I think that's all I had to add.
Is this completely fenced?
I'm sorry?
Is the fence around the whole area?
Yes, yeah. Seven feet high. And that was one of the questions in the bio, the bylaws require eight-foot-high wooden fence, but we talked last time about how it's so remote. On most of our projects, we have seven-foot-high chain link fence, that's electrical standard. So we thought that was appropriate here, given no one's going to see it. We've looked at other screening options when they're in high visible locations, but here we thought that was appropriate. So congratulations.
So we don't have to worry about her? Yes, I have one last question. So how big is this piece of property compared to, like, Walmart parking lot on 117? Is it like one Walmart, two Walmarts, half Walmart?
You know, I was thinking the same case. I was comparing it more to Whitney Field.
How bad?
How much of Whitney Field would this take?
25 acres.
It's about 25 acres, right, Whitney Field?
How big is the road?
I don't know. Not that big. Not that big.
Acres roughly, what, a football field?
You know, the whole complex, little field? I don't know, like, you know, we can find out what the mall at Whitney Field is.
Because you just got to think of all that snow that just sits on a non-absorbing ice.
Well, this looks, but it's just the sheer size.
And the ground is still going to absorb water.
But before, you got trees, you got giant trees that's trying to get, let it soak down slowly.
Yeah.
But they're going to mitigate it.
Yeah, we'll check and see how big the mall at Whitney Field is, so we can have a comparison.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
If you want to get an idea, look at the outline of the existing golf course in comparison to that.
So it's about the size of Nine Holes. Because I did that.
Back down, go back down.
I did that. And I have this map here, and it looks like, it looks like if you took the long distances along with the wide one on the backside, it's about the same size as Nine Holes.
Right there, right there is the existing golf course. That is the existing golf course.
Yep.
Is it bigger than the golf course?
Well, you got it.
It's a portion.
Yes.
It's probably the existing golf course, anyway.
That's part.
It's the main area, main open area. Look at that and then look at the design, and you'll see that this is somewhat similar.
How big is the Vashon's total piece of property?
The whole property is 360 acres?
360.
360 acres. So it's not even 10% of that property.
This will not be a man project. It won't be lit at night, but we certainly will have, it'll be monitored 24/7. We'll have operations and maintenance personnel in the area that are there on a daily basis or weekly basis, depending on the time of the year.
If something was damaged, you'd have...
Yeah, we're there, I mean, if something's damaged, we're going to know, but it's continuously, we're out there to fix it, yes.
See, that makes a big difference.
Yes.
And how is that communication done?
We're in touch with the utility. They know how much exactly we're producing, they already ended every hour.
So when we lose power, you know it.
Yep. When we lose a panel, then...
Anyone else have any questions or comments? What's the board's pleasure?
You can't close it.
No, we can't, because we have to review the calculations, but do we, do we want to have an independent review, or are we going to send the drainage calc to DPW?
I want to have an independent review, and I also would like to request a review by Mass Wildlife. That's what I would like to do. I mean, you can initiate it, Mass Wildlife. And, you know, no offense, but you've got an interest in this thing. No offense, not saying you're an honest man or anything like that, but, you know, you do have an interest here. You know, I walked that land, I could come up with probably some different conclusions than you, but, and I know the people that live around here that may come up with different conclusions than you. I just want to make sure, I think of this side... I just want to make sure, I think this size isn't going to interrupt, you know, the flow of life up here. I, I'm not worried about it being viewed, because you can't see it, nobody will be able to see it, I do know that. You know what? I'm just concerned for the other, the other families, I'm concerned if it's going to have an issue on the water.
So, I agree, we table the hearings pending a review of independent engineer and a request for a mass wildlife way to do it.
Yes.
So, Paul's motion is to continue the public hearing?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Have it, subject to an independent review?
And then we have to hear from the conservation, of course.
Yes, and then with mass input from mass wildlife?
Just limitations.
Maybe, maybe just through conservation, I don't know.
Here, our conservation...
We're filing very shortly.
Paul? His thoughts of putting in less than the 24 acres?
Yep, second.
Second, motion made in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion carries, do we have a date? Consider what we has to be done?
I don't know how long it's going to take mass wildlife to do a report or review that with them before, you know?
How long will it take?
Yeah.
We don't have the schedule, the schedule.
Yeah, doesn't have to, we have to get a mass, and we have to get an independent engineer to look at it too, so.
Well, we're not going to, we need to give it another date.
You can give it a date, and then if we don't have it by then, you could continue it at that meeting, but you have, otherwise, we have to renotice it.
Yep, June...
There's June 3rd and June 17th, possibly.
June 17th or June 14th? You have 14th on the list, is it the 17th? Oh, yeah, would be the 17th.
If it's 3rd, it's the 17th.
Yeah. Is this a title?
I had, it might be.
That's the first mistake, it was versus me.
That's my...
So, June 17th?
Yes.
I make a motion to continue the open hubble meeting.
Six thirty?
Six thirty. Six thirty.
Thirty-one and thirty-two.
Thirty-one, thirty-two, or...
Yes.
Six thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two.
Second motion.
Just like that.
Motion made in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion, are we within the 90 days?
No, we're not, we're gonna, we already extended it once, we're having to get the applicant to agree to extend it again. So...
Get something in writing? Thank you. Okay, you can put, make sure that they'll go in the minutes. Okay, so this hearing's continued to June 17th at 6:30, 6:31, 6:32. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Can you give us the average on Whitney Field, and also, I don't know if you can get access to this, although, yeah, Walmart would be another, no, Walmart's smaller.
For comparison, it might be good to get...
Yes.
Well, you can get both sides, so get one, you know, Shirley has one where the old airport was, and we believe that's...
Is this site all frag?
I, I, yep, as Tony Jolini used to say, we have a heavy agenda tonight, so I'm going to move on. Six forty, going to open up our public information meeting scheduled for 6:45, site plan approval for Richard Road and Montrose Street. I'm also going to open up the 6:46 meeting, which is a public hearing for a special permit approval for that same area for its use, and I'm opening up the 6:47 meeting, public hearing for a special permit approval for the amount in density for that area. If someone please present the plan.
Hi, my name is Michael Asama, I'm from S.J. Mulaney, here on behalf of Paul G. Drumel and Lord Nelson. Where should I set up? Is that...
Over the air is best, so that the camera can see it.
Give you the, flip it over, just to give a perspective as to location. This is the John Minneapolis Plaza, this is Route 12, this is north, south. The locust property is here, on the horn of Richard and Montrose. Ian Sartell, there is a zoning line division between the residence B and Commercial District going through here. We have, the situation we have, we're seeking a special permit for use. We have a single vacant lot located in a Commercial District that we're looking to get a residential use on. A budding for the zoning, we can apply the closest residential district's zoning to our use, if a special permit is granted by the planning board. So, currently, in this neighborhood, we have the Commercial Plaza, we have some professional uses along Central Street, a single-family directly to the rear, a single-family to the rear, a single-family up Sartell, then we have the townhouses in this area and then beyond our apartments. So, our proposal, coming back to our site, we have a 20,005-square-foot lot with an existing curb cut that was part of the overall scheme going back 15 years. The applicant owned numerous properties, and this is the last remaining puzzle of that larger development plan. And a curb cut was constructed here off Richard, once, when the roads were improved, part of the road improvement process. And probably about 10 years ago, we came for a site plan for a commercial building on this property, which included this portion. With the economic downturn and subsequent lull in the economy, a lot of commercial buildings weren't selling, and just, our, our client wasn't able to find a good tenant for this location. So, as the development occurred around it, the development started leaning more towards the residential uses here, and what our client wanted to do is put a buffer from the single-family homes and the duplexes, put an apartment, four-unit multifamily, as a transitional point to the commercial property to the north and to, to the east. So, on this lot, we have four two-story units, which we have an architectural rendering of what this would look like, that would be a view from this angle, from the intersection here. What I have included in your packet was a photo shop from being maps showing what the current conditions are, it's basically a lawn with, with some parking, this is all existing parking that's on there. This was, used to be one larger lot, the commercial in the front, additional parking was built with the anticipation of the commercial development to happen in the rear, which, which never occurred. Here's a view from Richard into the property, this will be the access point into the parking area, and you can see the lawn and the, the new curving, and then obviously the, the shrubbery and trees along the rear. The other element that we're seeking for a special permit is the density, for multifamily to have 5,000 square feet per unit, that's a special permit. By right is 8,500 square feet per, per unit. Currently, with the anticipation of the commercial development, utilities tubs have been provided for gas, sewer, water on Richard and Montrose. The drainage design, the drainage basins that were constructed here, while anticipated drainage or runoff flows from this, from this property into the drainage system.
How many units can we do by now?
2.6, so two. 20,000 square feet, yeah, a little over half. The other option, which would eliminate a special permit, is if the units were, the building was divided, and we had two town, two duplexes, two, two families.
And that would meet the requirements?
Yeah, that would, that wouldn't have that...
Have a special problem.
That wouldn't have a special permit.
And then the density issue.
The density issue, it doesn't, it says for multifamily, it doesn't give a density for duplexes. But when we crafted this plan, that they were looking to put a, basically a blockade, a transition, kind of fill in that gap between the residential on Sartell and Montrose and the commercial. From a snow storage perspective, there's, the, the pink area shaded here, our potential snow storage, we exceed it by about five times what's soon required, so we, there's plenty of space there. We have also submitted a landscape plan that's in your packet, showing the screening to the rear property. We're going to be, we're proposing a fence line along the outer property and a denser vegetation behind the Atkins property. It's my understanding that our applicant talked with the neighbor, and what was their preference, did they want to have a fence extend or no, they preferred the vegetation over...
And the one that changes from the original was that, then we discussed that none of the parking would be shining into the single families, so we removed that, right?
There, there's two parking spaces here currently, well, the, the existing parking, there's spaces in this direction, and there's additional space parking towards there, but we're proposing a fence along that property.
Do you have a dumpster?
Yeah, dumpsters, there's an existing dumpster located right here.
How many parking spaces?
We have, we have eight. By zoning, we need one and a half, or we need six, we have additional eight. So, this is extra parking, but it's, it's already paved, it's there, we realize. We could stripe it or not, or just have it as snow storage. This flexibility, this is addition, this is a very vast paved area there, again, for anticipation of commercials.
Can you, can you explain the rationale for the, I mean, I know the, the parking, that area is already paved and existing, can you explain the rationale? You're not going to have any garage space at all, or just the units?
Correct.
Well, you're not going to have any cars backing along the shore of the driveway.
Well, that, that's true, how far are you, I mean, I, I'm just curious, how, how far is the farthest parking space to the farthest unit?
About 100 feet?
Are we providing shot ins to the tanks?
So, so again, let us have a band, can you go to the audience again, instead of breaking that, I, I know you want one building to have that one, the continuity to the other neighborhood. I'm just wondering if it would be better, instead of looking like that bank building to be two duplex units, that would be more conducive to housing on Sartell, to make it look more like a, you know, housing versus an apartment building. You know what I'm saying?
No, I don't.
That was broken too. I, I mean, there's no difference, I'm just wondering what would look better? One big bank building?
Let the developer decide. You don't, what do you decide?
But why, that wouldn't affect the density.
That wouldn't affect the density.
Would it affect anything?
It's special permit, this, the more restrictive is the...
To do it this, this way, if you didn't the other way, you wouldn't need a special permit.
We already came in, yeah, yeah, we already came in for, we already had one special permit.
Right.
You do?
I was just wondering what, what the difference was.
And then, it's building code issues, as far as if you get the sprinkler, non-sprinkler, I think that may be another facet to it, so. So, there may be cost savings in the construction. It's two-story, the, it's just under...
Each? Well, 1500, 1750 each unit?
1250.
A gross area for both stories is 4970, just under 500, so the footprint's about 2,500 square, right? So, if we break that.
And each unit is about 1250?
Yes.
The railway thing, right?
Yeah.
And what's the, remind me of, what's the makeup of the units next, next to it?
On units?
Yeah, duplexes.
Condos up above.
These are duplexes, right?
These are duplexes, yeah, these are duplexes. And then you have single-family homes, homes behind you?
Yeah.
And how about across, are those duplexes as well, as well across the street, those part of the...
This is duplexes, this is all duplexes.
Okay. I'm only asking to see if it's a key thing with the neighborhood, that's why, and then it abuts residential property, which is the reason...
Well, it abuts, it's all, all really commercial, we have non-conforming...
Right, that's what I meant, right, not residences in commercial.
If I could jump in there, I don't have any qualms at all with duplexes, I might actually sit on there better, and... And I don't have any qualms, and if it opens it up, it might be a little bit more better, brighter in the units themselves, so, and I don't know, as, as I said, yeah, I'm not sure how we ended up with one four-unit building instead of two duplexes, because you're right, further up, I think we have 22 buildings, 44 are, that are duplexes. I think duplexes is a little bit more.
Um, let me, I'll open it up to the audience in just a minute, let me go through the department head comments. So, from the planning department. In terms of the site plan... Okay, I'll, I'll jump ahead, because I think a lot of them she, we deal with the department heads. So, for building, they have no comments, take that as an approval. Would be, I, I'm assuming they filed, he filed the rejection to get you here, but...
Yes.
Police say there's no traffic or safety issues, DPW approves. Conservation states that they don't have jurisdiction over the project. The Board of Health lists their concerns have to do with any potential lighting and noise that would affect abutting residential properties, and noise and orders from any nearby businesses that could affect the residents in the new buildings, the applicant's representatives assured as to if these scenarios would not happen. Assessor approves, fire approves, and wire inspector has no comments, and those apply to the site plan, the special permit for the multifamily and the, for the density and the special permit for the... and the, for the density and the special permit for the use as well. All the same comments. Oh, now I'll open it up to the audience. Does anyone have any questions or comments on this project? Yes, Mr. Albert?
My name is Sean Albert and I'm living on Love and Sartell Road in Butter. And also the plans, I, I was, my concern is lighting and it's all the control you get impressed. He's giving me a fence along, which I checked with the plans downstairs. If possible, I'd like to keep also the natural buffer, if that's possible with that fence. The lights, at least that way they're not, as they're coming up. The Noel into the parking area, yes, they're not flashing on. There's much out of my house. But other than that, I mean, he's done a great job. I think two duplexes would look better there also. This doesn't look bad either. I think two duplexes would definitely look better. I think that is much better than a commercial building sitting on that piece of property, which you could do. So as far as I'm concerned, I had to check with my neighbors because at one time I had kind of, like, in my name, the two neighbors I spoke to seemed to be in accord. So I think it's a nice project that we'll finish it. My other concern, which I didn't realize, is do you think they will be sold or they will be rentals?
Yeah, I'm sure, right now I tend to rent them out, but someday that'll be always available. Yeah, but that's on the table right now.
Okay. And also, as far as location, on the plan I saw going with the commercial setbacks. A commercial setbacks is nothing to the rear or ten feet to the side or something. Will it basically sit in above that location?
Here?
Yes.
To, if he goes to duplex road, is that your question?
Yes.
Yeah, we would just slide it closer to the parking.
Exactly. But basically, you're not going to push it back.
As close as we can per zoning to Richard Road.
So what do we see footage wise from the back of the buildings to Sartell residence?
We have, we can, we can get thirty feet of, thirty feet plus.
Thirty feet plus in the back, how about the front?
Front is twenty-six, well, right, twenty-five is the setback because we have two front edges. So we went twenty-six feet.
So you have to keep the area there.
That sounds good, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? Yes, sir?
Dr. Benjamin Atkins, and I am actually one of John's neighbors.
Oh, yes.
Right behind the project. And we're really pleased with everything they present. So we are, we're comfortable, give a thumbs up.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Work as well with the neighbors.
It's only taken twenty minutes.
He's got to do it before he retires.
So what, do you want to, do we want to continue? Yeah, well, I don't know. Did he want to propose?
Oh, yeah, did you want to change that?
I don't know.
Could we continue that so we could look at this?
Absolutely.
Just see if a duplex works?
Sure.
And see how it lays out in that way? Does that work?
I just think we look that up. My statistics is from the statistic, but I don't know if the number.
People don't want to tell me all. People would like to open it up. And it seems to be.
Do we continue through the site plan? Or do we, the special permit element is use and density?
So you would have a density issue. You wouldn't have a density issue if you went for the duplex.
But I believe you need a special permit to have more than one building on a lot.
Yep, they've got the use, they have the use.
It's a, I have to reference it.
Good point. But maybe under the other.
Do we have anything scheduled currently for the first June meeting? Of curiosity?
What's that? So. Do you have a reference to that? What's that?
The heat would ever change, so we'd have to re-advertise it?
Yes, who would have to re-advertise it? Because it's a different, it's different.
Different land.
Different what?
Well, but it's site plan, but the site plan.
We need the use first.
So more than one building on a lot, you don't have to advertise a site plan.
You have to say in the legal description that it's more than one building? So that Butters would do that?
But do we advertise site plans? I thought we only advertised special permits and other things. So that's why. If it doesn't change your other, the content or the, if it doesn't change the other two special permits, because they're still. It's still the use.
Wonderful, it'll go away.
Well, but we might as well continue all of them in case they change their minds. So, and then if they don't need it, they withdraw it.
I agree. Just to June third, six thirty.
Well, do you, how much time do you, do you need? Or do we do it for the second? And do you need, do you need one in two weeks?
No.
That's why I'm wondering, can we put, do we have a heavy agenda on for May?
May twentieth?
Six and fourteen, May twentieth?
May twentieth, we've got items up until seven, seven oh one. So we have to use seven fourteen.
We're not, we're not available then.
All right, May fifth, following.
So June third?
Okay, so June, June third?
Six thirty, six thirty-one, six thirty-two.
That's your motion?
Yeah.
Well, you have three.
You just did it.
Okay, six thirty, six thirty.
Six thirty-two, we'll take them and.
Got them. Safe.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. This will be continued to June third, starting at six thirty. Six thirty? Yes, six thirty.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, please have a mind your own. I'm going to open up this seven o'clock public hearing for definitive subdivision, for a petition for definitive subdivision approval for Mary Ave extension, also known as eleven fifty-seven R Main Street.
My name is Anthony Cleese. I'm with Foot and Engineering Associates here on behalf of James Zaris, the property owner and applicant. So what we have before you tonight is an extension of existing Mary Ave, which is located off of Bella Villa, which is toward the bottom of the plan, which is off of Main Street, Route thirteen. Also off of Mary Ave is Penny Lane. East west on this land. So the proposed extension of Mary Ave into a, a big piece of land. Right, right path out before you is a reduced, about by seventeen of this colored plan that you have here. And then also, eleven by seventeen is from the limits of G I S system. The property is outlined in red. And you can see the, it's a long slender property of about four and three quarters acre piece of land. If you look at that G I S, you can kind of see it as an open field on the left-hand portion of it and the remaining portion is wooded. And that's really where the bulk of the proposed project is, to give you a sense. So we have the cul-de-sac comes in off of Mary Ave. And we do have the existing tree line kind of shown on that colored plan there. So the proposed cul-de-sac and houses actually all sit within the open area, the field that's there now. Proposed stormwater basin is behind the tree line. So again, three lots subdivision. Residence A, so twenty-one thousand, seven eighty minimum square foot lots.
Has anything changed since your last, or this was last presentation?
So a little bit, very similar configuration from the preliminary. One of the things we altered is the existing right-of-way for Mary Ave and Penny Lane is forty feet wide. And our preliminary, we stayed within that existing Mary Ave right-of-way of forty feet wide. And we started to get into kind of the details of grading. We found that in order to get the grades work, we had a two to three foot cut right up against one of the neighbor's property lines, you know, forty foot right-of-way, so we didn't have a lot of room. We didn't want to have a two to one drop off right from that Butters fence. So we kind of kinked the roadway a little bit, still kept the center line of the paved with in line with Mary Ave. But we do have control of this parcel here, so we kind of kicked it over.
Can I just ask, since you're on that? One of the issues we raised when we did the site walk, again, it was your associate, I knew it at the time. That road goes directly, points directly into the house across the street. So lights would go directly into their windows. Anything that comes across it, we had discussed within multiple options where you could move that roadway, where it wouldn't have that problem. And I don't see that anything was going.
I mean, it's really tough to put this road anywhere else.
Well, I mean, there are places on top of the bottom. And again, when we were there. We talked about it with your associate, he said we looked into those things. And we're back today, but I don't see any discussion.
I'm not sure which house you're referring to.
Directly across, yeah.
Well, directly across is Mary Ave, that goes straight for quite a ways here.
And Mary Ave goes straight out?
Yeah, it goes straight. So I'm not. Not sure on that. Might be a different project, but Mary Ave is straight as an arrow right off of that. You can see some of the G I S, it's a straight, it's a straight road. Maybe you see it here on this print though. Mary Ave is straight, there is no, there's no house in line there. Well, there really is no other place to put this road or cul-de-sac. The right-of-way is existing.
It's your only entrance.
Right, that's the Mary Ave extension, there's no other place to put it. If we were to offset it somewhere else, it wouldn't line up with Mary Ave. Then you wouldn't have your center lines matching, you have a lot of intersection. So it's, yeah, yeah. So it's Paper Street. And then also to point out, I think it may be in some of the department comments, all of the surrounding streets are private, technically. None of them are accepted streets. Penny Lane, Mary Ave, and Bella Villa are all technically still private.
Is it because they weren't finished and they didn't petition the city, is that?
I don't know.
I know we had a problem.
That would be half on this. I think it's a citywide situation. So yeah, I'm not sure if it was ever petitioned or not and, or what. I think this was, Penny Lane was back in the early nineties maybe that that was developed. And I think Mary Ave had an extension on this side at one point because this part of Mary Ave seems newer than this part. But I don't, I don't know enough about the history of that, exactly what. But anyway, so there are private roads tend to be. So three lots coming in off the cul-de-sac.
So you've got a big open circle, no island?
That's correct, yeah. So that's one of the waivers that we've asked for, just to not have a landscape island. Depending on who you talk to, there's different opinions on that. I've had conversations with the DPW, they don't like it. Easy to plow, easy to maintain, where they don't have an overgrown island in the middle. So for this one, we didn't have, have drawn a, took it around the city. Some have them, some don't. It's a preference that we're preferring not to. We set our stormwater surface runoff that way as well. I think in this case, it seems easier to get the water funneled to a catch basin where we can crown the center of the cul-de-sac and let the water go right to the end. If there was an island there, that basically creates a dam. And now you've got to get it a longer, a longer radius to get there. Couldn't do it, you know, if we had to do that. But this seemed to work out better with the grading and everything. Stormwater, we're talking about a couple of catch basins to a manhole out to a stormwater basin out in the rear of the property. Sewer, the closest gravity sewer is here in Bella Villa. And so what has happened over the years is what we call spaghetti. You can kind of see it here, the light lines in here. All of these people have pumps in each of their homes. And it's like spaghetti coming up the road. And so I think as one of the comments from the DPW on the preliminary, we had had these three homes tying in with all the others. They had requested not to do that and to look at putting in like E1 pumps somewhere else. And so that's what we've shown here is an easement was reserved on this property for utilities. And each house would have its own individual line pumping up and then tying into Main Street. And then as we get into the department comments, if you'd like later on, one of the DPW comments was to take this manhole that I've shown in the right-of-way of Main Street and put it on private property. So it's not their manhole and tie in there. Otherwise, this was what the DPW was looking for as far as the sewer. And the water, there's a water main in Mary Ave. We're just proposing to extend that water main in to a fire hydrant at the end. Again, we'll get to the waivers, but one of the waivers we asked for is to have a six-inch water line instead of an eight-inch that the subdivision requires. Had a conversation with DPW before we finalized the plan. They had no objections to that nature of the product. Only three homes didn't really need any of this line. So I talked and they didn't have any concerns with that part of it. We filed with the Conservation Commission, as we have wetlands laying in purple on the back. The orange is a hundred-foot buffer zone. We also had an area identified as isolated wetlands. So the update on that is, we've been before them, two meetings so far, and we've had a site walk with them. There's a difference of opinion on the exact delineation. There's some areas that the commission is concerned and like to have more of a look taking at them. So we have hired another consultant to take a third-party look at the areas. And the Conservation Commission has done the same. They're going to be hiring another consultant on, from their side to look at as well. Unfortunately, some of the meetings have to get canceled due to form issues and things like that. So the Conservation Commission, I believe, hasn't picked their, their third-party consultant yet. Hopefully the next meeting, a week from tomorrow, they'll be able to do that. So that process continues on. So we're kind of, haven't progressed too much with the Conservation Commission yet until we kind of iron out the wetlands delineations. That's a quick overview. Hopefully you have questions, or I can go through some department comments.
Anthony, tell us about the, you're looking for a waiver on the cul-de-sac?
Yes, that was the landscape island was one of the waivers.
Not about, well, I mean, the street length, the street length?
The street length. So that one was always one of the ones where you can interpret it different ways. So the length of the road is two hundred and thirty-five feet, if I remember correctly. But everyone looks at it differently. I looked at it, tried to be conservative. I looked at it, tried to be conservative. Yes, our new road is two-hundred-and-thirty-five feet, but if this is your only way in, you could consider this distance to be your cul-de-sac length if you wanted to do that. So erring in the side of caution, that's how I, that's why I asked for that waiver. This road is less than five hundred feet, but from here to here, like nine hundred feet or so. So it's shorter than Penny Lane, it's shorter than Marriott. So that's why I asked for a waiver to kind of, to bring the discussion up, you know, didn't want it to kind of be missed if someone were to say, well, jeez, no, this is not two-hundred-and-thirty feet, it's, it's all the way to Bellavilla. So that's why I'm asking for that waiver. But it is shorter than all of the other roads that are kind of connected off of Bellavilla. So it's no, it's no longer than any of the other roads that are already off of Marriott. Plus even Penny Lane doesn't even have a turn around. It's just dead ends. Marriott does have.
His residences on Penny Lane?
Yep. Yep, so there's, and you can see the G I S. So you see the open field area, that's here. There's one house right in front of the open field area. You can see it, that's two-ninety-eight dash ET and two-ninety-eight dash twenty. Then there's another house adjacent to that, and that's the fifteen Penny Lane. If you look at my plan here, this is basically the end of the paved area. We do show it on our plan. It doesn't go too much further, but it is a little bit longer. It is. You can see it, there's a couple of houses on the other side of the street as well.
What does Marriott come out of? Is there a, does it come out somewhere?
Bellavilla. Everything comes off of Bellavilla.
Okay, so that's a dead-end town?
Yep. And longer, much longer than Penny Lane, actually. I wonder if you see it, sorry. Yeah, so you can see it on here. Yeah, so it goes out to a cul-de-sac.
So that one comes out to a cul-de-sac?
Yeah.
So it's a cul-de-sac on both ends?
Yep. So again, it's no worse than any of what's out there, but that's why I want to point that out, that yes, technically, we're only adding two-hundred-and-thirty-five feet here. It is shorter than everything else around it, but I wanted to bring that up, have this discussion so you're fully aware. So it's, so the new road is two-hundred-and-forty-five feet. The total length from Marriott up to Bellavilla Main Street is six-hundred-and-thirty-five. Sorry, I mispoke there. The existing normally portion of Marriott is eight-hundred-and-ninety feet from Main Street, and Penny Lane is seven-hundred-and-seventy. So we're six-thirty-five. The other end of Marriott is eight-ninety, and Penny Lane is seven-seventy. So we're one to two-hundred-and-fifty feet shorter than the existing streets that are already there, up to Main Street.
What is south of the proposed lot? If my directions are...
Another long side of the lot.
Is that, it looks like, is that Bernice, is that Bernice Ave with the baseball field?
Yeah, Oakback, yep. You have the ball fields back there, Bernice and Wildflower. There's a long slender lot that butts us, if you see that on the G I S. It's very similar in length, actually, to our lot. Not as wide. And that extends from Main Street all the way to the back of the homes on Quail Run. Quail Run is a small cul-de-sac. There's the ball field. And Quail Run is a small cul-de-sac off of the Wildflower, I believe it is.
All right. Let me, I'll read the department head comments before I open up to the audience. All right, the planning director on our behalf comments on the waiver request for us to consider, and also other comments from the department heads as well. She, our director notes that a development impact statement was not submitted as part of the application. Details upon submission, a copy of the statement shall be presented to the Board of Health. Were you looking for a waiver of that, or?
So I was unclear in my interpretation of the regulations. Actually, the waiver was easy, but I read it, made it sound like the planning board would give us a scope or none at all. So we were hoping that you would allow us not to do a G I S, due to the nature of it only being a three-lot subdivision, as in the existing area. If a waiver is warranted, then yes, I would, I can add that to my waiver list if you feel that's a, maybe a waiver.
Okay. She'll get, list the waivers for us to make sure we take those into consideration.
Yeah, so a lot of the, the planning director's comments, I think, are easy in a sense of that we're just going to address them. You know, some, some minor notations to add to the plans, making things a little easier to read, you know, add some north arrows, things like that. D I S was one I thought was worth bringing up tonight. The other ones I thought that may be worth just, just commenting on in the comments and information slash edits section on page three. A note was made to section eight L, the results of perk tests are required by the Board of Health. I don't believe we need to do perk tests for each lot as we're tying into public sewer. So we're not doing on-site septic systems, so I don't believe we need to do those. If we need to ask for waiver, then we would absolutely do that. I think eight-point-two I, the way it's, the way it's written in the reg, it's the same thing that talks about perk tests and deep holes, but also it talks about stormwater. So the way it's written is a little confusing, because it talks about doing two-deep hole tests and perk tests on each lot, which is consistent with what the Board of Health identified requires for septic systems, so we're not doing that. But also in that same section, it talks about doing infiltration, you're doing infiltration stormwater practice, you have to do perk tests and deep holes for that. D E P doesn't allow perk tests anymore for infiltration practice of stormwater, as they believe it overestimates the actual infiltrated capacity for stormwater. So we don't do those anymore for stormwater. We did do a deep hole test with the D P W in the stormwater basin, they witnessed that. So I think we fulfill that requirement. If we need to technically ask for a waiver for the way it's written, I can add that to the waiver list as well. Stormwater, D P W, what I've mentioned, had their comments. We can add some notes. And the rest, I believe, were either waiver requests or we didn't have any, any issues. Another one was, I wasn't sure exactly what we're looking to do for the last item on that page, section nine R seven. Where ways to deconstruct it for the full length and width, the center line of such roadway shall coincide with the center line of the street right-of-way unless a variance is approved by the board. So that area does get tricky, and so I think that's where it's just kind of, maybe looking at the property plan, kind of see what's happening there. And that's kind of what we're talking about with, because the existing right-of-ways that we're tying into are forty feet, it's kind of an odd, an odd situation. So like I talked about, we're kind of bringing the road away to make it so that we're not infringing upon this property owner with grading. And so we added a right-of-way line here. And that distance from this corner to there is forty feet. It's going to be a kind of an odd property line situation. At first with the preliminary, we had Marriott coming forty feet in, and then the cul-de-sac. If we do that, there isn't enough room to grade the road without getting into this person's property or having a steep drop-off. So we didn't want to do that. So we kind of cut into this property to gain some right-of-way, still having it forty feet here, did not allow us to move the road like I showed, to give us some room to grade. So it's definitely an odd, an odd situation. The road center lines do match with the pavement, and it is technically in the center. It just, it's not easy to see, just because it's very odd configuration, so.
What's that now?
Grass.
Just grass.
Yep, it's grass, it's level grass. So if we need to add, add that to the waiver list, to kind of clean up the confusion on that app, so it's a very difficult area to understand, and I have a tough time, and I had to look at the plans for a while. So we can add that to the waiver list.
You already have a lot of them.
Yeah, so that, exactly. So there's a very small lot, which I believe is less than the current minimum. So it just really kind of becomes a part of the subdivision. So we're, we're using that to make the road right-of-way better.
It's kind of good.
No, I think now that, now that it's common ownership, it may have been years ago, but now that it's common ownership, I think you probably have lost your grandfather. So we're using that to our advantage to help make the road better, so they can work better with the abutting property.
So building approves, police approves, fire approves. The D P W, as you mentioned, Anthony, says to relocate proposed manholes shown within the Main Street right-of-way to the east so it may be located on private property. Please provide a copy of the stormwater pollution prevention plan. Please provide homeowners association agreement to maintain all stormwater structures, including detention bases and subservice bases and the sanitary service force mains and pump station.
And if I can, just to expand on that, I think the reason why the D P W was putting that in there is when we did the soil testing, I kind of had opportunity to talk to them about what we're doing. So it was a good little, almost like a pre, pre-design meeting, and that's when it was kind of brought to light more, so that all these streets are private. So if all of these streets are private, ordinarily, once this is done, we come to the planning board and the city has to accept this subdivision as part of the city. Where all these are private, chances are, this will never be accepted by the city until everything else is. So I think, so going into this, we kind of fully expect that we can't count on this being a city road at the end of the day. So that's why the homeowners association was kind of playing there, to make sure that that's, that we're discussed and worked out. And then that also, I think I'd like to talk about, you see how long and slender that property is in the G I S. We're only able a third of it here. The rest is parcella and not a building lot.
Is that what you wrote before?
Yeah, so the stormwater goes back there, there's wetlands all back in there. So it's just open space, could be part of the homeowners association. Two and a half acres can use back. So nothing really designated. I think I'd heard that the Little League Field may have wanted to try and see if they could use that, but there really is no connection. They don't affect the land, so it's probably not of any use to them. So, you know, it could go to the city or just be part of the homeowners association. That's not, sorry, it's just... Right. Exactly, you have to go all the way back.
Conservation states that there's historical wetlands, and what is shown currently on the plans, this may cause issues with where the homes are located. Currently located in the plans be moved or need adjustments to the lots. The project is subject to the Wetland Protection Act. There are also concerns about stormwater plan. The roads surrounding this extension are all private, it's unlikely this extension, that just this extension will be accepted and the stormwater systems will become cities. The commission recommends the maintenance of the stormwater basin should be dedicated to one specific person or home. This will assist in ownership issues in the future, as well as any maintenance and enforcement issues.
So on that, we're going to, we would choose not to do that. I think the concern with that is, has been some experiences where you're trying to deal with a group, it can be tough to enforce it. But then also, we find that if you try and stick it with one person, that's not fair for a subdivision, so we're probably still going to stick with the homeowners association way of doing that.
Assessor approves. Board of Health states the applicant proposes to utilize individual sewer ejection systems in all three homes. Potential home buyers should be informed of the operations and maintenance. The city has no obligation to work on these as they are private property. Three homes appear to be situated in very dense configuration. Lot three may have some hydro, hybrid soils associated with the wetlands. We'll address that. And fire approves. So now I'll open up to the audience. Does anyone have any questions about, or comments about this plan?
If I can just interrupt, just to...
Go ahead.
Where we are still kind of deeply involved with the Conservation Commission, I would, I want to continue until now what happens here tonight.
We were going to suggest that. One of the things I'd like the applicant to do, Anthony, is if you're adding to the waivers, if you could do that so we can consider them.
Sure, absolutely.
After tonight's discussion.
Yeah, absolutely.
But I was going to propose we keep it open.
I agree. Okay, motion to continue. Well, if there's anything else you want to talk about, if there's anything you want to be trying to address for the next round, whatever you'd like. Fully expect to continue, but if there's anything else that I need to try and look into, we can. I thought we're pretty covered for now.
I think it's mostly the conservation issues. I don't, I didn't see any other substantial issues. What the Board of Health written, I think, were more conservation concerns than Board of Health concerns, but.
So for now, my homework is to update the waiver.
And then, and then update the waiver list. I don't know if...
Yep. Put this to June 3rd.
So wherever we're expecting to, so we have a meeting with Conservation in a week from tomorrow. And my understanding is that that meeting, hopefully, they're going to choose their consultant to go out and look at the wetlands. Hopefully, they get out there right of way. If they're as busy as all of us, might not be possible, but hopefully. And then they meet two more weeks after that, the second, second week of June would be for that. So if you want, you could, take us off if you want, you could put us on for the next meeting, and I can give you an update. If there's something to talk about, great. If there's not, I can say nothing to talk about.
Why don't we put you on for June seventeenth, only because we don't know yet when we're meeting in July or August? Does that make sense, Elizabeth?
Yep.
And then if you're not ready, you can even just notify the planning department, and we'll just, you don't have to say something.
Hopefully, we'll be ready by then. And you said, if you want us to come back for the next meeting in May, I'm going to be here anyways for other projects, so.
Oh, I don't know.
It's up to you. If you want an update, I can let you know where we're at. It's up to you guys, whatever you like to do. I don't know if you're a gentleman.
I don't know. It's getting there. That's why I'd rather go up to June seventeenth if you need time.
Yeah. It's only based on the independent reviews.
Right. So if you want, I can, I can update you at that, at that time.
We have five items on May twentieth.
So that's why, why don't we move to, either, either the, either the, whatever, the fourth?
The third.
The third or the seventeenth? So why do you, June third? June third, we already, we scheduled, um...
Richard Vermontrose.
Yeah.
So the seventeenth, what you said.
The seventeenth?
If we couldn't, the third, with that fifty...
I can update you. Because if something changes, I can give a...
I'll put it on. You can.
Six forty-five?
Yeah.
Yes.
June third. How about six thirty or six forty? I don't think that...
We have one at six thirty, six thirty-one, and six thirty-two.
That's Richard Vermontrose.
You don't think it's, all right, so six...
Forty.
Forty.
So move to...
Motion made in second to continue. Marriott extension definitive subdivision plan to June third at six forty. Okay, great.
Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
All right. All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Motion carries. All right, I'm going straight into seven fifteen while people are packing up and uncapping. Continued public hearing for definitive subdivision approval for the Meadowlands at Willard Street, along Norley Side of Willard Street, including number six seventy-one Willard Street. Okay. What's that? I think it's... I think it's...
subdivision plan for a 27 lot residential subdivision off of Willard Street. We left off with the last hearing pending a site walk with the abutting neighbors and planning itself to review some of the aspects of the site design. During the previous hearing, there is significant concern relative to the actual entranceway of Willard Street. We have reconfigured the entranceway to be a little more conducive to what we received comments back from the board and the town, or the butters, and other various entities, if you will. But for the time being, I'm gonna start with the frontage of the property, just so we can review that. Sorry. All right. Just so we can orientate ourselves here, we have Crabtree Lane along the, along the page of Willard Street, along that direction too. As you might remember during the initial hearing, we originally provided a plan, the proposed roadway extended straight through and hugged the eastern property line. During the hearing, there was concern raised by number 664 Willard Street relative to light shine being on the property. And when you walked onto the site, there was definitely an issue, let's see. So as part of the redesign, we actually shifted the roadway so that the edge of the travel ways align with the shared property line between four Crabtree Lane and 664 Crabtree Lane. This helps relocate the point where the cars and everything are entering onto the site away from that residential building. And Crabtree Lane, Kirk House, has a solid vital fence and the house is more situated along Crabtree Lane, so we're trying to avoid that as much as possible. Because we relocated this driveway entrance, we had to relocate or readjust some of the grading and drainage in the areas in order to make it compliant with our...
Is that still in and out?
Still in.
We had also talked about possibly doing it in, or going in and out.
Yeah.
But we didn't do that.
We, I took a look at that. Remember, it was relative to where the emergency access was. Just because of the requirements under subdivision and the profiles and everything like that, and the fact that we have a power line easement that runs to the property, which we have to be concerned about too, it was very difficult or almost impossible in order to get the grades in that area to work. So that's why we tried to keep it this way, so we can at least have enough ability to make grades work for the site. Thank you. With this change, like I said before, some of the grading changed, the locations of the houses and everything for that also changed. The second major component of what changed prior to the last hearing was the kind of double part of the site here. With the cul-de-sac end, we had a meeting with the Sanstead Association to review their concerns relative to the environmental impacts. During that hearing, several line items came up that we figured we could address easily, so we tried to accommodate as much as possible. One of those changes was that we were able to alter the cul-de-sac end, so now it's offset rather than centered. What that does is it allows us to pull the buildings and the limited clearing and the work that we have to do further into the development. If you were to walk onto the back portion of the site, there's actually a quite steep drop-off along this back portion as it goes into the wetlands and the resource areas. So what we've done is we've tried to maintain that top of that slope, so we're not digging or destroying that vegetated slope, so we're maintaining our integrity along that edge. Along with that, in some property line switches, we're able to move a significant portion of the houses closer to the roadway and help eliminate that disturbance. In addition, we'll be placing a conservation easement along the back portions of these properties, which will be de-restricted and everything like that, so that future homeowners don't inadvertently insert doing work back there. And during construction, a line of boulders much is placed along that tree line, so that it's a permit demarcation of that resource area. We do have scheduled conservation hearings for next Tuesday, which we'll review the same thing with them. Previous projects that I've personally been involved with, this is a direction that the conservation is going more in line with as a restriction for residential properties, some kind of a permit demarcation, so we feel that they're gonna be more comfortable with this rather than just line on a plan and a note underneath.
Chris, how far footage-wise did they come in?
Specifically, it's more along these houses right here. This house is actually pushed, sitting on the fifty-foot line, so we've actually moved it almost forty, fifty feet forward. So it's a substantial shift away from that edge. Less than sixty feet. Yeah. And in doing that, we also took a second look at some of the drainage systems in order to help eliminate as many more of the runoff from the site. As part of this, we decided to relocate the detention basin to be closer to the actual development. What that does is it allows us to utilize exfiltration as part of the means of mitigating the stormwater runoff, so that this detention basin only discharges, starts discharging at the higher storm presence and retains the mass majority of everything on the site itself. And it also helps with grading and makes residential houses a little bit experience corner. Besides that, we haven't, not much else has changed substantially on the cyclines. If there's any questions from the board, I haven't answered them.
How many houses was it again?
Twenty-seven, still twenty-seven.
So we didn't shift them along, be right across from the other one?
No.
How many feet did we shift it by? Because it was the corner and that tree in the wood.
Yeah. Yeah, so the tree's in the right of the way of the road, so it's gonna be a DPW concern. The fact that it hasn't been currently taken down is kind of shocking, but that's a DPW concern. But we've shifted it approximately a hundred and so feet away from...
From the other driveway?
Yeah. Yeah, so originally it was right here.
See what they...
So it's about eighty feet or so, maybe more, about eighty feet around a hundred. But we shifted it so that we're not directly facing any of residential properties.
Do you have one comprehensive plan, Chris, with all the, I appreciate the follow-ups, but I just wanted to see the one.
It's a little more convoluted, but did the roadway come in through here?
Is it still right on, well, it's not right on the corner anymore.
No, sorry.
The sight lines coming out of there.
This area is still pretty straight, for at least the next two properties over, so you'll be at easily two hundred feet of a clear line of sight along that edge. And it actually moves a little bit closer to this curve, sort of sitting further out onto that curve going towards this other portion of Willard Street.
I mean, to me, everything was pretty, except for this little bit right here where you stuffed a bunch of houses in. You gotta front back, push them back to the, sort of cut maybe two, two mile there and make it a little bit better and work. That's what I was interested in. Really, also, they're spread wide. They had it, density is pretty high right there. I figure it was lots, I can't believe it.
I figure lots. They were all...
But they're all carved, so they fit right there.
Members, yeah, no, members have any other comments? Yeah, no, right now? I'll open up to the audience, so anyone have any questions or comments for the applicant? Please speak directly to the board, not to the applicant. Yes?
Yes, I answered a few questions I think you all should have gotten. I sent an email. I don't know if you have the...
It was in the packet for the last name.
One of the questions is subdivision regulations require street lighting, and I don't, there wasn't any on the plan, and it was mentioned that there weren't gonna be any, so that is, that's a concern. I know when the adjacent development was starting to build out several years ago, I got a lot of calls, it's very dark up there, so, you know, I think there should be some lighting, I don't think it needs to be lit on the first mystery, but certainly at least a half a dozen, you know, with some intersections and cul-de-sac and stuff like that, because I think that's gonna be a problem. And also, I asked a question about section fourteen, item, I actually think it's section nine I meant to, I meant to say, but I put section fourteen in the email. It's item N, and that's, I'll read, I'll read that section here. That section, it's on page forty, the subdivision regulations, and it talks about an operation and maintenance plan shall be provided for the proper maintenance of the stormwater drainage system and to ensure the system's function as designed in accordance with DEP best management practices. All detention and retention basins shall be the responsibility of the developer and subsequently the owners association once established as to its long-term maintenance and maintenance of landscaping. Said detention and retention basins with apparatus shall be guaranteed from defect in construction and operation by the posting of a performance or defect guarantee for a minimum period of three years in an amount not to exceed twenty percent of the value of said improvement. So I assume that that's above and beyond a regular bond that's posted, so I'm just curious what, what that amount is gonna be, and I want to make sure that that's gonna be in place. I think that ensures the integrity of the infrastructure that the homeowners association is responsible for. So I think I'd like to see those amounts and make sure that that is gonna be put in Question three pertains to section eleven, item two, section B. I can read that as well from the subdivision regulations. Basically, it talks about the maintenance of the, you know, of the infrastructure. A maintenance endowment shall be established by the developer in the amount of five percent of the construction improvement cost that is approved by the board prior to the release of any lot in the subdivision. The principal amount of the endowment shall not be drawn upon by the association for at least fifteen years from the date of its establishment, at which time it might be drawn upon for maintenance or reconstruction of roads. So I'd like to, I'd like to know what that five percent, what that dollar amount contributes to, so that we can ensure that that is properly in place, so that if there's problems, there's money to fall back on. I'd also like to know what that amount is. And just in general, what, what, how much of a bond for this project, just in general, the board will be requiring? Because I do believe that all of those other funds and endowments are above and beyond the regular bond that they have to post. So those are some of my questions, and I'm kind of curious as to if the DPW has done any calculations or if the engineering firm has given any preliminary, preliminary amounts on those items. That's it for now.
We used to get those council from, through the DPW, the bond amount, the over and above for the roadway.
Have they given any of those yet? Have they reviewed?
I haven't seen any.
Through the board. Typically, that kind of calculation is performed prior to construction, as everything's starting to be going, because at that point, we know exactly what we're in need and everything like that. Right now, as you're very much aware, we're in the permitting and planning state of everything, so things are still subject to change. But typically, prior to construction, those numbers and those bonds and all that information is provided from contractor and or engineer to the city to review the scene. And we go back and forth a couple times, and eventually we all come up with a number and we're satisfied with it. Relative to the operation and maintenance plan of the subdivision itself, we are in contact with a law firm in order to create the HOA, so that is currently being worked on, just timing everything, you know, sometimes it doesn't come up, it's a critician in time, but that is currently being worked on. And we've had conversations with DPW regarding what's gonna be required on the city's behalf for maintenance and what's required for the HOA association. So that, as part of that, the stormwater system will be fully covered. This also has to go in front of the Conservation Commission, so the Conservation Commission's also gonna take a second look at it. And provided within our site plans, there is the operation and maintenance plan, and within the drainage report and with the notice of intent, that's gonna be filed with the Conservation Commission, there is a detailed operation and maintenance plan that dictates what happens during construction, pre-construction, post-construction, long-term maintenance requirements, and everything like that. Within that, there are, there is a checklist and a maintenance log, to make sure that the homeowners association is taking care of that. Typically, the Conservation Commission will request that on a annual basis, so there is some checks within the system in order to make sure that those systems are being maintained.
Chris, who sets those bond amounts?
Typically, that's DPW.
Even for the, the, the other ones?
The stormwaters usually, because of how the site is designed, it's all incorporated to one, you can't build, you can't start building, releasing bonds without all the infrastructure being in place, so.
Yeah, just, I just have one more thing too. You know, they, they have an attorney that's involved in a lot of this stuff, and I think what might be a good idea is when the subdivision is actually approved, if it is and recorded, you know, with the registry deed, maybe they can have a template of some of the language that the homeowners will be agreeing to under this association, so that it's public and everybody knows, it's already recorded and it's public information that anybody that has conveyed a piece of property in the subdivision knows exactly what they're gonna be signing at a closing and what is gonna be their responsibility. I'd like to see a template of that, so that we can all understand and make sure that the integrity of everything that the homeowners association is supposed to be doing, paying fees, doing the maintenance, we can see that it's in writing and that it's, it's there. Because, you know, I'm not, I'm not trying to say that, you know, I'm not trying to say that this particular developer isn't gonna do what he's supposed to. All I'm saying is, is there's a history of a lot of this stuff not getting done. I'd like to know if there is one, what subdivision has done all of these things that I've just mentioned, because I don't know of one of them. There's no funds for any of these detention bonds, they're just abandoned and we're left holding bags, so I just want to make sure that it doesn't happen again.
Will that be part of the deed?
Yes.
The HOA is...
Yeah, so the HOA is, yeah, the HOA is a recorded document, so it will be referenced within their deed and during the closing process of any house. And all these things have to be disclosed to the homeowner or purchaser, so there will be mechanisms so that they know indeed that there is a homeowners association that they require to follow this part of owning a house or any kind of property on this project.
And I know that we've had homeowners associations, you know, set up in the past, but somehow they get spun off and they go defunct. And that's, that's what I don't want to happen again, and we need to make sure that things are in place so that it doesn't. That's all. Thank you.
How about the streetlights?
Conversations DPW, they don't want them, because nobody wants to pay for them. That's...
The city still want to pay for them? The city doesn't want to pay for them. Yet we have a council, the city asking them, and they are in the bylaws, so I guess that's probably hard decision.
I mean, we've been told not to put them in.
Well, I, I mean, it's pretty dark, you know?
He's right.
It gets dark. It's dark at night. Yeah, it's good. Now you know what the problem is.
It's dark.
You might run into him and cheese, get the Jesus out of you. Put the mark, mark it down there. Any other... Well, you know, yeah, let's, well, you know, I think it's just a half street lights. Maybe we don't need all of them, but we need to take a look. But you got how many intersections? How many would be required?
I don't have that number.
So it's how many, every, how many feet?
You've got three intersections in a circle.
The subdivision regulations state, if I'm reading from the right side... The subdivision regulations state, if I'm reading from the right section, streetlights are required and installation should be coordinated with National Grid.
It says, doesn't say how far.
No, that's, I've read to you exactly what.
Although National Grid doesn't do street lighting anymore, the city owns that. These subdivision regulations were written before that happened.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? Yes, Skip.
Yes, you move twenty-five. I have a question and two comments.
I'll hold you to that.
I know there's been a couple of reiterations, and so is this an emergency access and then a main road, or is it two means of egress?
Emergency access.
Emergency access.
And just as a, you know, member of the public, I would say that I would hope the planning board for this purpose and for future purposes would require two means of egress. There's twenty-seven or twenty-eight houses with a single means of egress. I believe that the requirement under the planning board regulations is no more than eleven houses without two means of egress. I appreciate there's a second for emergency, but it doesn't allow for good flow of traffic onto the street, the many cars backed up to make exit onto the main road, for snow, for delivery trucks, for oil truck, for any other number of things. And I really think that it's not a great precedent to set to have that many houses with a single means of egress. The other comment echoes the council's comment for the homeowners' association. When I looked at the regulations, it appears that the planning board, the way the language is written, should really review the homeowners', draft homeowners' association documents prior to approval. I know the applicant has said that these documents will be provided, you know, when construction begins, but I think that that's too late. My understanding, this is going to have private sewer as well as private drainage facilities, which is a lot of maintenance. And I think the regulations also provide, if the city is going to maintain it, that a cost estimate be given to the planning boards, consulting engineer, or to the DPW. And given that homeowners' associations have failed in the past, perhaps the planning board as a measure of caution could require those amounts in case the city has to eventually take it over to get some feel for what the yearly maintenance will be for those various systems. When I was looking at section eleven maintenance, it says in part, "A set of covenants which shall be subject to the review and approval of the planning board shall provide the following." So I, I think that the language anticipates that those documents will be submitted to the board prior to any approval. And given the scope of this project and given that it includes private sewer as well, I would strongly urge the board to require those documents before approval.
Anyone else have any questions or comments?
Yes, Phil Draxx, five Drillitt Street. I've seen that there's now a house where there was prior going to be a road. That's very close, and I'm wondering if there's going to be any kind of privacy screen between my house and the new house that's in there. And in the discussions we had, we were actually looking at the road, and it's very, very narrow there. So I want to echo the concerns of twenty-seven houses with potentially fifty-four cars and at least a hundred and eight trips a day going out into that very narrow area. And I don't think the sightlines are realistically all that good in that area.
So where are you again, sir?
I'm, I was directly next to where the new house is. And looking at that, that's roughly, what, a hundred feet from my, my back porch to where the new house is.
Is this brush?
Yes, there is some vegetation along the property line.
Is there not a house there?
That's where the street was. This is where the street was, for sure. Currently, we're not providing a visual buffer between the house and the, this property primarily. Technically, we can go pull building permit tomorrow for this house. Where it's located, it's made to all the setbacks, the subdivision's every little group. So that's.
That'd be your neighbor.
That really has nothing to do with it, because you're not proposing a single house. You're proposing a subdivision. They're not going to pull permit tomorrow, which is.
If I may echo just the concerns here. Lisa Prophet, representing my sister and Patrick, six-six-four. We met at our house to the sidewalk, and we very much appreciate that. We, I think, agreed when we left there that the sightline more towards, I think it's Crabtree, was superior to where it was proposed before. And I thought that, we thought that moving it over to where the access road is proposed was what he was going to do. I'm not really sure why it, I mean, this is an improvement for this property, but I don't think it's the best solution, given that it is still only one access point. I think we saw how wide it was, how broad it was, and it was just a better solution all around. If you move the road away from where it is, move it over to Crabtree, you might be able to move that other house that's now in where the road was away from his property as well and maybe solve two issues like, like we thought he was going to do in the first place. So it's an improvement, and thank you for walking the site to see how tight that was. But it certainly is almost no better in terms of how.
I was really hoping that they were going to line it up with Crabtree.
Correct, yeah.
And it was supposed, you know, that's what we discussed.
And I think we talked about how you would approve that, and he had talked about how his original proposal actually was putting the road in there. And then because you said, well, move it, then he did. So I think the proposal originally did put the road in there, so it is an option. And we would ask that you consider that to, to actually be the main road. Widen it as far as concerns were. It's a tight squeeze as it is.
That's what I was hoping.
Well, I'm not sure if you have a four-lane intersection there. It's better than a break.
Well, because they're so, Tom, they're so close.
I know.
That if you got a lot of traffic coming out of that intersection, taking the right into a lot of traffic coming out of the other.
Well, that, that intersection there has, I think, four houses on it, so there's no traffic on Crabtree whatsoever.
Right. Twenty houses over there.
So what's your? So, through with the board, during the sidewalk, I never made promises.
Oh, no, I agree.
I said I would take a look. We'd take a look at it, and we did. But with the consideration of the roadway system and the lots and profiles in order to make this roads navigably safe, we wouldn't be able to make the proper gradation changes that we need. That's why this area was abandoned as an idea. It was reviewed. We did take a look at it. But because of the grading in this area and the fact that we're limited by other factors on the site, that area wasn't as conducive to allow construction of roadway.
But Chris, it could be done.
And it is your emergency access.
It is our emergency access.
Not, not only that, but the, one of the proposals was to get rid of that front lot, and you have plenty of room to put the road in and move it out first. So you do have options.
Just downside, you run hell. You run away from the problem of encroaching on the other neighborhood.
And I just don't understand it. If it is an access road, how can, how can there be grading issues if you're using this road?
Because on a subdivision roadway, you have to meet certain curb radiuses and.
And on the access road, it doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter as much, because it's never going to be used unless it's an emergency. So this is allowed to do a lot more variations than the actual roadway can. And then, once you get into the site, you naturally have to do turning maneuvers in order to make sure that vehicles can get in or around the site itself. But with this location, we're trying to move it as close as we can while maintaining.
Twenty-seven lots.
Twenty-seven lots.
And that's our problem.
Right.
Because if it wasn't twenty-seven lots, let's say it was twenty-five lots, you'd have plenty of room to make those, those grades and to make those turn radiuses. And configure it on the, the emergency access road. You'd have plenty.
No, you would also be having two intersections that are not in line with one another, never having two.
But we were very, very close. It was still, Chris, I, I know I was there, and I know you were really, you were great with us when we were there, and we appreciate that. But if it still came out, kind of, just like the last one we were talking about, Mary Ave, you know, the center line's going across, that, and, and it's wider there, the line of sight's much better, you're not contending with a narrow, narrow road that two guys could barely pass on, and then if it's stuck at the tree. Yeah, there's just so many advantages, I don't know, you know, why the.
Well, the roadway was really short.
I don't do that.
And then during the preliminary phase, we did review if we had the two roadways coming in, the turning, with me so close.
No, that was crazy.
It wasn't a great plan.
No.
So that's why we have the one entrance to eliminate the amount of turning maneuvers within Village Street. And this also allows them to get enough distance from Crabtree Lane and the, funding the developments to make sure.
Yeah, but it's wide there, you know.
But they still would have to come this direction.
That's correct. But once they get to that direction, where the other driveway is still coming in, the other roadway is still coming in, it's still narrow, and you're right on.
That's why I'm talking about it in a L, so you don't.
Yeah.
I mean, I think this just created two more problems. You, you put a house next to him, and you really didn't increase, you didn't increase it any safety there. I mean, you, you took the, the line of sight right out of six-six-four, but it's not, it's not as good as it could be if it were moved over and potentially lose a lot to make that happen.
It may only pass around.
There are existing neighbors that need to be considered in addition to adding twenty-seven lots. Thank you for your time and appreciate your inspiration.
Anyone else have any comments? Yes.
Yes, I was at the meeting when, when we all went up Village Street, and the conversation, everybody kind of looked at lining up the Crabtree as a good way of doing this project. Once we put this in, we're stuck with it. So we have to do it right. So we have to, it's a narrow street, it's winding, it's very close down where that, that road is going to come in. It's very narrow, in the winter, it's likely it's thirty feet to snow, fifteen feet on each side. If you park on that road, every car is going around on the other side. So what you're doing is you're putting a project that benefits you, but you've got to remember the abuddies are also there, and they were there first. So lining that up, the abuddies were happy that it lined up with that Crabtree. And even some board members. So I hope you consider that, because once you put something in, that everybody's stuck with it. If it's a lousy plan, that it's forever. And that was supposed to be a secondary road, a road going on the side. I'd like the, the board to really look at it, because once this goes in, like I say, you're stuck with it. It's not a few houses, it's twenty-seven. It's, it's a good-sized development.
Anyone else have any thoughts? Yes.
I'm Ed Himlen, I'm with the Lake Samoset Property Owners Association, and we sent a letter to the planning board for the prior meeting. We also had an opportunity to meet with Chris and the applicant, and we addressed a lot of the issues there, and I see them, I'm glad to see them changed in terms of the overall plan, particularly in terms of the infiltration basin and the relocation of the cul-de-sac. That's great. What I want to do is though, is I just want to concur with the remarks, and I forgot your name, I'm sorry, about the homeowners' association documents. Because, and I can give you the citation if you want it, but it's right in the subdivision regulations. It says that the planning board shall look at these documents and approve them before they approve the plan. If you want the citation, I'll give it to you, but it's there.
I believe you.
Okay. And as part of that, some of the things I'd like to see, and I'm hoping that we can take a look at that, and we can, we can talk with the planning board about it, but some of the things that I'd really like to see in that is a delegation of the person who's responsible for the operations and maintenance. If you don't have a delegate in it, it ain't going to happen. You need to have the restrictions on the lawns and the fertilizers and all that other information in the homeowners' agreement, it needs to be on there, it needs to be part of the conservation restriction. That's more a con-con issue, but still, it should be in the homeowners' agreement. And the city is responsible to EPA for the stormwater permit. Somebody has to report to the city, because the city is supposed to include this in their annual reports to the EPA and the DEP, and so that should be specified in it as well. So those are, you know, who, who's going to report to the city? I mean, who in the homeowners' association reports to the city? Or does the city have to track them down? I mean, there should be somebody designated to do that. And again, you heard before, as far as the funding mechanism, that really needs a close look. And the Lake Samoset Association really liked the opportunity to see these documents and talk about these documents. So that's the main thing. The only other thing, and I talked with Chris about this before, is we're real interested in finding out what the pollutant load's going to be coming off of the subdivision. And there's some simple calculations, and there are requirements under the city's stormwater permit, and we would like to see those calculations, and we would like to have a chance to see what can be done as far as reducing the amount of particularly phosphorus that comes into the lake. Because we now are in a place of, you know, taking care of the weeds, and, not yet, but we will have blue-green algae. And every pound of phosphorus that goes in that lake will generate five hundred pounds of weeds and algae. And I can give you citations on all that if you want. But what I did the calculations of it, what I was coming up with was thirty pounds a year, which is, I forget, fifteen, sixteen thousand pounds, but that's in one year. But the phosphorus doesn't go away. I mean, it doesn't go away. It keeps on adding up and adding up. So if you take a look at it over a longer period of time, say ten years, you're looking at a phenomenal amount of weeds and algae that the Lake Samoset Association is going to have to pay to get rid of, to treat it. So that's a big concern. So we would like to see, we would ask the planning board to please require the calculations for the pollutant loading that's going to be going into the lake. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Boyd, any other comments or questions?
I'll just say that it didn't seem that any of the neighbors were ambitely against this project, so I'm hoping that there could be some tidying up that is.
I mean, I think overall, everybody that was there, if, if this would have came into the outside of the homeowners' documents, the association documents, and you'd come in, you know, not you, Chris, because you know it's not your fault. If that other entrance had been used as the right of way in the project, I think you would have had us all on board, or the applicant would have had us all on board.
I personally think there's too many houses.
I think there's too many houses myself, but.
Maybe there's four or five too many houses.
And I think the one and a half has been an issue since day one.
I don't like houses that are built off front, the next one built off back, so the guy's backyard is in this guy's front yard.
But it's one of those, they have the lot size.
I just don't like the design.
Yeah, no.
I'm not saying it doesn't.
Well, but the reason you don't like the design is because there's too many houses. And, you know, the subdivision.
They had to do it that way, because.
You know, everyone's citing, you know, Mr. Cormier did a good job citing different sections of the subdivision control lot, but, you know, the most important one is that this has been enacted to protect the safety, convenience, and welfare of the inhabitants of the city of Lemonster by regulating the laying out and construction of ways on subdivisions, providing access to several lots, but which have not become public ways, and ensuring sanitary conditions in subdivisions, and in proper cases, parks and open areas. I'm not going to continue reading at all, but I just think there's too many houses and not enough access roads. And so one, there's got to be less of one and, or more of the other, or maybe both.
I think that area is the only place for access roads, right? It's the only land that goes out the walls. It's the only land that goes out the walls. So putting two of them in 60 feet of each other, to me, doesn't make sense.
You can't do anything else.
You're going to have problems. One going right, one going left.
That's why you want to make it as least intrusive as possible, which would have meant shifting it to Crabtree or whatever it is. Crab Apple Crab Tree, Crab Ass, I don't know what that is. That would have taken away a lot of the problems, but, you know, either shift a couple of houses or get rid of a couple of houses.
I think the backside has two houses. The rest of it, yeah, it falls okay.
Well, you got.
I think there's two or three too many houses in the backside.
Which is a side that abuts Lake Samoset.
Right. But there should be some.
This all goes down to Lake Samoset. Your estopography is.
It's all down to Lake, it all drains to Lake Samoset. Except for the infiltration basin, which they've made now a detention basin, which, so there will be infiltration into the ground, and the soils are good for it.
I'm not sure how you control, Cooper's white on there, on their owners.
That was part of the homeowners association. Right, but they'll still do it, sort of like you have to have when they fill, everybody filled in that swamp behind your houses, little by little, but then they have a lot of problems.
We'll volunteer to provide information for people, and I think people, once they know and they understand. You're not going to eye everybody, but.
Right.
As far as having somebody in charge, you don't have a homeowners association yet, so you can't.
Well, just as a thing, who is the president of the association? Is it the.
Do you have the belief we can't add to it because we don't have association documents?
You know, I was looking at that, I mean, this is what it says.
Could develop.
But I think, I mean, in practical terms, I think we can't. I mean, I know we've done it in the past to get Frank. It's under maintenance, hold on. Because it's under section 11, under maintenance, and it says, "For systems not owned by the city, applicant shall establish a homeowners association to be responsible for maintenance and repair. In the event the city has to maintain, etc., said class shall be assessed by the city to the owners within the subdivision. The security documents and easement shall be in a form satisfactory to the planning board." Doesn't, you know, but.
There's another section I can refer you to.
Please.
And it's section two, authority, C, responsibility, three, and I'll read it, just so you can. "Stormwater management systems shall be documented and a report submitted at the time of application. The report shall include old drainage calculations, proposed maintenance and operation requirements, and provide a copy of the instruments that are proposed to use, to create, and owners association that will own and maintain said system to allow the planning board to evaluate the adequacy of the proposed design." That's right out of the subdivision, right?
And then it's, and then in section 11, A2. "In cases where a homeowners association is required, there shall be written into each deed for every building lot in the subdivision a set of covenants and restrictions, the form and content of which shall be subject to the review and approval of the planning board, which shall provide for the following." And, I mean, what order does that come in? It's kind of hard to approve it after the plan has been approved.
That's right. And it is a shell, but a May, so.
It is. But I, I'll be honest with you, the homeowners association is the least of my problems right now, so. So it's, I read it to the pleasure of the board and the applicant what they want to do with the hearing tonight.
Well, if we were going to vote on this, I'd vote it down.
All right, that's what I.
Yeah, me too.
Because there's too many houses and I don't like the way it's going in.
I'm not totally against the way it's built, and I'm against how many houses are.
Well, that's the way it's built. I'm against the access altogether. That's the major problem, and by downsizing a couple lots, I think you can correct all the grades and you could have returning maybe a season.
So, Chris, do you want more time to consult with the applicant if they have this? Or do you want us to proceed?
Proceeding, we had to, because H O E draft has not provided. Review it with the applicant and move on from there.
That's a power. All right, so then I move, we continue the hearing until.
I know, how much, how much time do you need, Chris?
Kirby on the next available.
The next available?
May 20.
So, May 20.
What do we have on May 20?
We have three, five things.
We haven't, because we didn't, we haven't closed one hearing tonight, and we had.
We had.
We had one, we had two, three, we had four projects, but.
Right, this is the last one. We had three things.
Three projects, five applications on.
Six, three isn't better than the five, 20.
Six, three has four applications, two projects.
June 17th has three, I think.
Maybe it'll help.
June 17th has three projects, one application.
Get rid of a house and two or ten's the access.
Well, what do you want, to cut the number of houses down? Do you want to change the street?
Well, but change the street, he's going to have to cut the number of houses down.
I mean, we just spent an hour and a half on the issues, I think Mr. Anderson knows what the issue is on.
And the applicant did receive comments from Jennifer Pears, right?
I'll read it, quickly read it into the record. Jennifer Pears at 641 Willard Street. She has concerns, to those of us living in the 600 block of Willard Street, about the present traffic and increase in traffic that will occur as a result of the proposed project. Between Jitec and the sharper corner past the proposed development outlet to Willard, the street becomes flat and relatively straight. As vehicles reach this flat area after Jitec, they speed up and begin to drive very fast. Vehicles coming in the opposite direction begin to increase speed as they come around the corner. Speeding occurs with both, most vehicles, in particular, a problem with pickup trucks and sporting cars. The street at this point is narrow, the two vehicles need to be cautious, etc. As the density of the area population has increased, so obviously it has the number of vehicles on, using Willard. Our house faces the street in a cluster of five houses at about the middle of the flat stretch. There are nine children and the age of 10. Several of the children are old enough to play in the yards. The noise is also noise, there's no signs. We would appreciate some consideration that could be done to control the speed. Which date do we have, Montrose, Richard Road and Montrose, is that the third?
Yes.
And what else did we schedule that day?
Mary Avenue extension.
Okay. And what do we have on the 17?
Watchuset Street, the three permit, the three applications pertaining to that. Site plan and two special permits.
All right.
That's somebody, yeah.
Yes.
Good, if I could, Pete Landzey, you want Lakeview Drive? Looking at the houses on the left-hand side, which I know they moved over, and he talked about putting a boulder, that green area there represents an incredibly environmental, environmentally sensitive area. It's rare species habitat. And having served on the conservation commission, the acid test of the rare species act is that there should be no change, temporary, permanent. I know that's a conservation issue, but I think it may hold some value to the people on planning board. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'd rather, I think we, I mean, I think Richard Road and Montrose will be relatively quick, and Mary Avenue was continued for conservation issues that I may not, may not go forward. And if Mr. Anderson's requesting the third, that seems to be the best statement, and so let's start.
Six forty-five.
Yes.
We have one at 640, so it's 645.
Yes.
Yeah, it's good.
Motion made in second to continue this to June 3 at 645, all those in favor? All right, all those opposed? Okay, so call to one, please.
Patrick Farland.
Here.
Fred Fredericks.
Here.
Al Wizer.
He's here.
Present. Salvatore Chappone.
Here.
John Sizemore. Excuse, permanent area zone.
Here.
Thomas Carrigan.
Minutes of previous meeting, March 25th, are these still in draft or pretty comprehensive?
Very comprehensive.
The only thing I have to say.
You're naming the spelling?
Yeah. I'm a, I'm really devastated.
You said S at the end. You said S at the end.
No, just kidding. Just passive aggressive.
Is that a motion to approve March 25th?
Yes, it is. So moved.
I'm supposed to read them in advance?
I already did, I'm just going to take a look. Oh, okay, I'm good. I'm all good.
Motion made in second, all those in favor? All those opposed? Minutes from April 1st.
Excellent, Jim. I make a motion to accept, except.
Motion made in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. 3.0, 3.1, plan submitted, none. 4.0, old business, 4.1, site plan for 449.
Continued.
Continued. Four, two, a special permit for the use of 449 Watchuset, continued. Special permit approval for 449, for special permit for watershed, continued. Definitive subdivision approval for Willard Street, just continued. 5.0, new business, site plan approval for Richard Road and Montreal Street, continued. Special permit for Richard and Montreal's, continued. Special permit approval for Richard Road and Montreal's, continued. That's, this is bad, at least they're spread out, though.
Yeah, he's going to be.
Yes, I know. And definitive subdivision approval for Mary Ave. extension, continued.
Yep.
6.0, communications, 6.1, discussion of summer planning board meeting schedule dates. We can't take one because we have all those.
Apparently not.
So, um, we'll have both June 3 and June 17th, we always have the two in June.
Yep.
July 1 or July 15th or another date.
We always do the 3rd week of the month.
We go, we split it, well, we do the 3rd, so that's the July 15th.
So, so.
July 15.
I'm not going to be available on the next.
So we're not doing July 1st.
Wait a minute, maybe I will, actually.
We won't do July, if Sal brings up, Sal, refresh my memory, is that we always pick the 3rd.
Yep.
So July 15th, and then August 19th?
Actually, I will be here on August 19th.
Well, then if we have to have a special meeting, so be it, but, or, you know what? They can wait until September.
That's right. That's exactly right, Carol.
They know, they, we've been having the same policy for 20, at least 20.
20 years.
Five years.
31 years. And not only that, you know, a lot of this stuff is going to come in right from the beginning.
So far, we're going to revisit.
On the site.
Yeah, okay.
So, June 17th, you want to revisit the July and August?
No, no, no.
No, July 15th, August 19th.
Okay.
I mean, if you, if you come in on the, don't go to September. 6.2, 60 Hospital Road follow-up discussion on conditions.
Yep. We sent out communications, 60 Hospital Road, the other letter from, I believe it's Samuel, Mr. Campbell. I talked, I did some research to the mayor's office, and I didn't get answers back yet because they had sent two letters to the board when the 60 Hospital Road application went through, making requests to the planning board, they were asking for a peer review. But I didn't get, I wanted to get clear communication from the mayor's office as to exactly what they had wanted, so that we were doing it, carrying out in the way they wanted. What do they mean by a peer review? I did talk to an engineering firm, Bill Scully, who did the traffic report.
Yep.
And he says he does peer reviews, so that's a possibility, we can have him do that since he's already familiar with the situation and the layers. That might be an option.
Is that close to this? That's not something we got to send out to get, right? This is a peer review?
It's just a peer review. So, that's as far as I got. I need to find the emails and phone numbers of the folks that represent those businesses. I have their addresses, I was able to track those down. But some of them are in Scottsdale, Arizona, one of them was in Rhode Island, one was in Fritzburg, so one was local.
You mean for the other people outside the hospital?
To coordinate with the other.
Right. If it's the one for the hospital, wouldn't it be, don't get me wrong.
All right, so we're still waiting?
So I'm still, I'm still getting some information on that.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
All right, that sounds good. 6.3, correspondence from Damian Riddle regarding Verizon cell tower for 40 minutes in a drive. I'll read the letter and I'll tell you my thoughts. Just talking to Elizabeth earlier. Dear planning board, please be advised that I represent the Nusonok Country Club. Consider this formal notice of intent to convert, 61, to convert, pursuant to 61B, section 9. The club is currently negotiating with Verizon to locate a cell tower on its property. The property seeks to convert 2,500 square feet of area of land in the northwest corner. The proposed use of this land would be to lease it to Verizon to allow them to install and maintain a cell tower. The name of the landowner is Nusonok, with the address of 40 Nusonok Drive, Lemonster. And his name and address are set forth above. In close, please find an authorized affidavit that the landlord or landlord has provided notice in accordance with 61B, section 9. And also in close, please find map drawn at the scale, the assessor's map showing the location and acreage of the land the club seeks to convert. I withdraw to respond. So, and then he has an affidavit. And so he, I read 61B, section 9, and this, basically it gives the city an option of right of first refusal to purchase the land if the land qualifies and the country club does. But there's a laundry list of things that the landowner has to do to convert it. And one is to enclose a certified copy of a purchase and sale agreement. Because I think it's going to be kind of hard for the city to act if they don't have.
But how are they going to buy it from, they're based on.
They're leasing, right, they're not selling it. It's leasing it.
All they're doing is leasing.
They're not buying.
Ah, well, they should have a lease then, I think, attached to it. Well, I, I think, I think.
The last people I came, right? Did it no matter where.
So, regardless, regardless of that, so that's my comments, you're right, they are going to lease it. But my suggestion is that we vote to tell, to suggest to Elizabeth that she speak with, I guess, the city clerk or the mayor's office to determine, because they, we just have to be notified along with the mayor's office and the city council, so to determine what action, if any, they're going to take on this.
Well, they have to commit, so that's just, they just notify them.
They're just notifying, yes, but, yeah, they're just notifying us of this. They're not telling us.
They still have the site plan, they still.
I know, but the first thing they're doing is notifying them that they have this lease, because the city, under 61B, section 9, the city has a right of first refusal.
On a lease?
I don't, see, I don't know, because now I realize it's a lease or not.
But they, they could sell it to the city.
They could be getting $2,000 a month, yes, on a lease.
If they want to sell.
Twenty-five thousand dollars a year, and what's the city?
It says section 9, "Land taxed under this chapter shall not be sold for or converted to residential, industrial, or commercial use while still taxed or within one year after the time, unless the city or town in which the land is located has been notified of the intent to sell or to convert to that other use." The notice of intent to sell, okay, okay, so this is all to sell, and I was thinking it was going to be sold.
No, it's a notice.
So they have to send that notice of intent to all the parties, which they've done. So I guess, it's just for us to have read it into the record and.
Again, it's not going to be too.
Nothing we can do anyway.
Look, we voted against it on.
We're in much better pursuit.
The other plan?
Okay, so, anyway, I don't think there's any other action that needs to be taken, now that I've read the letter right, because of all you guys. 6.4, planning board recommendation for the city council, for city council petition 59. Dean Mazzarella requests the city council vote to authorize the attached electric abesment. Regular course 325, 2019, pending referrals, VW planning, mayor, trustee.
I'm familiar with the area question and they wrote the thing, it doesn't seem controversial in any way.
No, it seems controversial, Pat?
On this particular instance, so.
Not tonight.
At first glance, yes.
So it's a recommendation? City council?
Oh, you're giving it to me?
Sure. I know, it's my trash, this is my trash.
Oh, you're good.
This is my city. That was safe stuff.
I usually just save a certain amount of money.
So, the grantee, which is JLM Realty Trust, uses a portion of. So the grantee, which is JLM Realty Trust, uses a portion of electric avenue for the purposes of parking vehicles. Which portion is within the layout of the, of electric as, as shown on the plan? And the city has utilities within and other improvements on the area in which he would be encroaching. And so the city is granting the trustee of JLM Realty Trust an easement to allow the Realty Trust to continue parking vehicles on that area.
I make a motion for a positive argument.
It says, it's electric as.
It's across from our lady, like... Okay, right, 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 right.
It's like right on the...
It's like, it's like a Lake Samoset area. So you're going to need an easement.
So I have a motion, I have a motion to recommend from that, second from Paul. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, we'll send your additions to the mayor's office and the clerk.
7.0, Director's Report.
You receive reports on each one of your applications, sometimes multiple? And that's what you got?
Good enough for me.
All right.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
No executive session?
No, because something was posted. Motion was, motion to adjourn, seconded by Tom. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.